Twenty first, two thousand twenty four, it's six o'clock P M. We are in person and via Zoom at Old Town Hall, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Massachusetts. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items listed not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This was revised at two nineteen on Monday. Can we please have a call to order again?
I'm Nicole Mello, present.
Mark Fratichko, present.
And Peter Karen is present. We just returned from executive session. But we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm just going to ask you to stand for just a couple of minutes. I mean, a half a minute or so because we've lost two residents this week.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above.
Like I said, we lost two residents this week and it's always so sad when we lose somebody. But Roger DeRozia in France. I don't want to butcher their name, but Kochenbur, something like that, if somebody knows better. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Right into appointments. The first one is Vincent Hebert. This is a review, discuss and act Board of Health member appointment. Is Barbara coming this evening?
She was supposed to be here.
Yes, I thought she was. Okay, let's just table it for now.
I have some discussion on it, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure, if you want to discuss it or we can table it when she gets here, but it's up to you.
I think it's just like for the board, so I have some discussion about this. So when I saw this agenda posted, I was expecting to see three names. Because I sat through the interviews and there was three candidates. So there was Jonathan Gale, there was Leonard Hull, and there was Mr. Hebert. And at that meeting, Selectman Mello had her preferred candidate. But it's my recollection that you didn't have a preferred candidate. So we tabled it until such time that we could, you know, sleep on it and come back to the table. I had a conflict of interest, so I couldn't vote.
Right.
So now it's been quite a few weeks and there's only one name on the agenda. So it's no reflection on any of the candidates. I think it's a reflection on the board. I just, I put myself in the candidate's shoes. They put their names out there. They went through a selection, they went through an interview process with the board. And then I would feel so bad when they open up that agenda to see their name not on it.
Okay.
It, not to draw too harsh of a parallel, but it reminds me of the police chief where our poor current chief was interviewing for the job and there was multiple candidates. He found out by opening a press release from the town of Dayton to find out that he was not going to be listed as a finalist. This is exactly what happened with this candidate. Not only that, it's been seven weeks since the close of the appointment. We've kicked this can down the road. I feel like it was not handled properly and I am just, I'm embarrassed that there's not three names on there. My first real, my first thought was perhaps they withdrew. So I reached out to them and neither one withdrew. And I hate apologizing for the Board of Selectmen when I didn't have something to do with it. And I felt it was just, I really hope it was an oversight. If it wasn't oversight, it wasn't just to the board. Our administrative officer had pointed it out too. So I think all around that this was a mistake and they owe the apology at the least.
All right, let's, let's table it until Barbara gets here to explain why it's just an appointment of one member.
Can I just say real quick, I was under the impression that one of the three had withdrew. I didn't receive a letter or anything, but it was verbally told to me, so I did not know that there were still three candidates.
I guess neither did I, not that it's an excuse.
No.
But I thought we were down to one and this one was being appointed.
We left it that there was three, three members to be appointed. So like, let's say Selectman Mello in the last seven weeks changed her mind because you can't talk to her. So you don't know what she knows or what she doesn't know.
Right.
If she came to this meeting tonight and said, you know what, I changed my mind, I really want one of the other candidates, you're boxed in now to either pick this one or to postpone it yet again, which would be a disservice to the Board of Health.
Okay. All right, we're not going to postpone it, but let's ask.
Sure, I'll make, I'll make a motion to table this until Barbara comes.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion or any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sharon. Hi, you're up.
Hi.
This is again a review, discuss and act annual appointment of election workers.
Yeah. So there is just a slight change in appointment protocol for election workers. In working up this year's appointment list, I found that appointments must be affirmed by the Board of Selectmen. I did reach out also to the Elections Division. This is in accordance with the Act of M G L fifty four, Votes Act of M G L fifty four, section twelve. I do have my list of appointments if.
We have it here.
We have it as well.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure.
We don't need to read the list because it's on file in the packet.
Correct.
So it's just basically a law that we have not followed or is it a law that's fairly new?
It, I guess it was always under the town clerk's right to appoint. And so before it was, as long as they were appointed, three weeks before the elections, that was always fine. But then we did get called out by Patrick Higgins and he said that, you know,
Okay.
we were not following where we needed to be doing.
Okay, well, we don't want to be in violation, so
Correct.
basically we're going to take your list and appoint them unless somebody has a concern.
Sorry to be the squeaky wheel. So you cited in your letter, chapter fifty four, section twelve. First, Sharon.
That's what they told me.
I appreciate all you do. You're our chief election official and a separately elected official, so I, I hate to even bring up election things because I just. So it says the town shall make these appointments no earlier than July fifteenth and no later than August fifteenth. So it's August, it's August twenty first. And then the law says if the selectmen fail to, so that ship has sailed.
Correct.
We didn't send a letter.
Yep.
The, the date has passed for us to appoint. So the law says if we fail, the Board of Registars appoints. So if we were to follow this law as written, like let's, we failed on that part. It is what it is. It's, you could call a registrar's meeting, that would be to comply with this law. So then the Votes Act, which is what you referred to, says the six weeks prior and the three weeks prior. So, you know, six weeks prior, you could come back, but we're two weeks out.
Correct.
So I would say you could appoint now, the temporary list.
Yes.
And then go to your registrar's to do a permanent list based on this law. And then next year, we'll get the letter out, we'll
In time.
Get it in time, go through that process and then you would come back and we would do a, the list per fifty four, section twelve. Is that, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I don't think you have to do a registrar's meeting for this election.
No.
Because you can appoint.
I can appoint.
And then you would do one, because we failed part of this. And then you could do one for your November election and then next year we'll follow this by law.
Sounds great.
Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And while I got you there, the Votes Act also talks about police details for elections. So normally when you do the warrant, we do that. So I think unanticipated business, we could discuss it.
Okay.
Do you have a, a number of police officers that you want for the primary?
Correct, I do. I want two for the primary and four for this, the November fifth.
So when we vote for the warrant, I would suggest that we vote for the two details for your primary and then when you come back for the warrant for November, we if you're okay, because you're the chief election official, but if you would give us how many police officers for November?
Four.
You okay with that? Yeah, when you do your warrant for that.
Yeah, when I do it, throw it up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. Okay, so there's no reason to vote on it because she's going to appoint them herself because we were in apparent violation, which I had no, no clue about. Okay, let's move on to Bernie. Is he here on?
Nope, he just entered.
This is going to be an update on the town administrative search. Bernie?
Yes, I'm ready. Karen, are we able to make that whole screen? Thank you. She should be able to hear you now.
Bernie?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? This is Peter Karen.
Hi, Peter, sorry, let me just get everything set up, yeah.
Sure, are you ready? Are you ready for us?
Yes, I, I, yeah.
Okay, great.
Let me, let me just share my, my screen with you and, you know, give you an update on where we are with regards to the town administrative search and tentative schedule moving forward. If I could, I need, I need to be able to share my screen. I think that needs to be set up for me. No?
Yeah.
Is it able?
Karen's working on it.
Sorry, I'm working on it.
Okay.
No, that's me. I think you can go to his link. You can make him. Oh, wait, yeah. You co-host? Yeah, you can do it that way now. That's not him.
Yeah, that's not him.
That was all, nope. Good. This should pop up on the bottom now. Beyonce. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. All right. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do this virtually, juggling a bunch of meetings tonight, so this is very helpful and I appreciate it. I did want to have this opportunity to give you and the members of the community an update on where we are with regards to the search. And if I could, just very quickly, I'll give you a summary of sort of where we've been, where we are. As you know, I was out there, I believe, on June fourth and I was engaged by the town, we were engaged by the town on June fifth. I got right to work, meeting with members of the board through virtual meetings or through phone conversations. We also worked with the gathering information from the departments as well as other information that was available through, for us through various websites and information gathering that we did. And through that, we developed a, the community priorities and candidate attributes. And we developed the position profile. And I think I described when we were out there on the fourth that we see the profile as really important as, in terms of process that the town can use to identify where you are now as opposed to where you were three years ago when you hired a town administrator. The needs of the town have changed, skills you're looking for may have changed. It's, it's a great sort of opportunity to think through, you know, what you need from a town administrator now. And we, of course, utilize it as a means of recruiting candidates as well as assessing candidates that, that apply to the position. So we had the position profile that was accepted by the town and we moved immediately on June twenty fifth, right after we got the go-ahead that we had gotten the information right. We posted the position and we began the active recruitment process of reaching out to individuals that we thought might be good candidates for the town and we could, that we could have them apply for the job. We posted the position at the Nastville Municipal Association. We also distributed it to various graduate programs and public administration, not necessarily looking at the current students or the more recent graduates, but in fact looking at the alumni of some of these graduate programs in public administration that might be interested in this position. We also utilized our own database. We have approximately four hundred people in our database that were, that we keep in touch with and reach out with positions as they become available and let them know about the position. And ask them if they're not interested in the position necessarily, if they can distribute it to someone else on our behalf. That includes all of the managers and assistant managers and administrators here in the state. It also includes the, the people that we've been working with over the last decade that, you know, we're familiar with that are interested in becoming town administrators. And so we've distributed that far and wide. We also, given the geographical nature of positions such as this and our knowledge of the people that are out there potentially looking for a position like this or perhaps not looking for the position, but that perhaps should be looking at a position like this. We made specific outreach to those people. I would say we probably focused in on about two dozen people, reaching it out and, you know, urging them to consider the Dayton position, to look at that. We had a deadline, it was a soft deadline, if you will, July twenty sixth. When I say that, the nature of certain positions now is you keep them open until filled. And so we, but we guaranteed a first review for people that had submitted their materials by July twenty sixth. In the end, we received twelve applicants for this position. A number of good quality applicants and people that we've worked with in the past as well as some new names for us that, that we felt, you know, we had some, some good candidates. We had some good candidates that, you know, had great resumes in terms of what they'd done with their careers, but they didn't necessarily match what we had identified within the position profiles, the skills and attributes that you're looking for. But from that, we selected five candidates of the twelve, we selected five for interviews. And we had a professional panel, myself, Sharon Flaherty, who I believe a number of you had spoken to during the process. Sharon's background is, is primarily in communications and journalism, particularly focusing in on journalism with the municipal, covering municipalities here in Massachusetts. And we also utilized two former town managers, the former town manager of Auburn and the former town administrator of Burlington. But he'd also, both had served in smaller communities as well. And we, they participated in the process of interviewing these candidates. And our topics, which I think, you know, the board, when it conducts its interviews, will do something similar. You know, we want to understand their careers from their perspective and why they're interested in the town of Dayton and why they're interested in being town administrator. So we're going to get a feel for, you know, what they're, they're looking to do and how this, this particular position matches in with the rest of their career. We want to understand how much management experience they have and their leadership style as to how that fits in with, with a system of government, a form of organization that Dayton has. Clearly, one of the more important aspects of the town administrator is financial management. Obviously, you're, you're a financial team in place there, but it's crucial to have an administrator that understands how a budget's put together and how municipal finance is conducted. You have a number of projects, both physical as well as operational projects. We want someone that understands how to execute, carry those out, bring projects in on time and under budget and deal with the complexities that may exist within an organization. So, you know, we wanted to understand what, what the experience has been in that regard. Economic development and growth management, that balance of how you promote development to reduce taxes within the town and to create revenue, but also growth management in terms of planning and development so that the character of the community is retained. That careful balance, so we wanted to make sure that people had some background and understanding of that. And then personnel management, labor relations, understanding the, how you recruit and hire people, how you discipline people, how you hold people accountable, how you motivate people. And then, you know, nowadays, it's, it's become also important to have a town administrator that interacts with citizens and ensures that there's transparency of operations. So we wanted their perspective on that and what they had done in that regard. And at the end of the day, the, the success of any town administrator really depends upon the partnership with the executive board, the select board in the town of Dayton. And so we wanted to, we discussed with each of them their, their background with regards to how they would interact with the select board, communicate with the select board and have that partnership moving forward. Out of that, we have three finalists that we will be presenting to the board. And we expect to be doing that within the next week. I can't at this point give you their names. I know that we're anxious to get those names out, but we're still in the process of doing the background reviews. Those are underway, doing the query checks, those are, we're expecting those should be in by the next, in the next couple of days. But we're spending time talking to anywhere from four to five people, specific references of each one of these individuals. We've done background checks beyond these references. These are people that they've given us generally, but we're familiar with each one of the communities that these individuals work in. And we've been doing some background checks beyond that. But what we are doing right now is talking to those references that they've provided us so that we can generate a report for you that summarizes what we've heard in terms of projects these people have worked on, style in which they operate, and giving you more information that you can, that will help you in interviewing these candidates, evaluating these candidates, and making a decision about these candidates. And I think I explained this when I was out on the fourth. We interviewed each one of these candidates for about forty-five to sixty minutes. We've had discussions with them, you know, beyond those interviews. But we end up spending more time talking to people who know these candidates, who work with these candidates than we actually spend talking to the candidates. We'll have an opportunity to do that when we do the interviews with them, but we want that background review done before we get to that point. So that's what's taking place now. I do want to talk about the written assignment tonight, if we could. But I will tell you about the candidates that we have. They all have municipal experience. None have been town administrators. They, in that regard, the market is such that you're going to be looking at three candidates who, I will say, have been finalists in other communities. We are familiar with each one of these candidates and their backgrounds and we've interacted with them. But they have not necessarily been candidates in our searches. But we have talked to them over the last number of months and a couple, in one case beyond that. And we're familiar with their work. But they come in with backgrounds in municipal operations, backgrounds in economic and community development. They all understand municipal finance. Interestingly, they've all been an elected official, but they've also, beyond that, held positions in municipalities or for governmental entities that this is their career. And it goes beyond just being, having been an elected official. We think it's important that each one of these people has the administrative managerial experience. But interestingly, each of them have been in the position of understanding the necessity of interacting with citizens and implementing policies. So we think that they bring a, a unique and interesting perspective to the, to the table. We expect the finalist report will be issued to you by the end of next week. That will list out the, will provide you with their cover letters, their resumes, the summary of their background reports and their written assignment, which I want to get to in one second. And then we expect that the interviews will take place the week of September ninth. One of the candidates will be away that first week of September. So we're looking at the interviews on September ninth and avoid selection right after that. I'm happy to take any questions now that you might have regarding this, but I do want to talk about that written assignment that we talked about when I was out there on June fourth.
Do you have any questions to call?
No.
I remember when we talked to Paradigm, Nicole, Selectman Mel had a really good point about doing like a meet and greet. I thought we did decide on that.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that was like a go.
Yes.
So were we going to do a meet and greet with the candidates beforehand or?
It wouldn't be, I don't know, we could do that in a couple of different ways. We could do it before your interviews, but I, we've seen it done both ways. It might be useful to do it before, but I would also urge you to consider maybe doing it after your interview. Or, or in conjunction, the same, at the same time. But we can certainly work in a meet and greet as well.
We could do it at the same time. I think that makes a lot of sense, like the same meeting, maybe beforehand.
Sure, we could probably do something and I can, I can work out a schedule on that so that we, and I guess I'll need to know from the board what time you can start your meeting. But we can certainly, I do recall that we talked briefly on the fourth about trying to do something like that. But we could do something perhaps where we have candidates come in, interview with the board and then do a meet and greet before you go to the next candidate, a meet and greet, the last candidate and a meet and greet, or do it the other way. Whatever, it really will depend upon when board members are available to do the, the interview, what time you can start. I wouldn't suggest that you do interviews after eight thirty. It's a very long day for everyone involved. So if you could, if we could try to do something, probably be getting it about five or five thirty so that we can wrap up by, you know, nine o'clock with their events.
Okay, we'll get back to you on the date, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yep. So. So, so with regards to the assignment, I, I have three topics. I, I wanted to get a sense of the board of what you, what you felt would be most useful to you. And so, based upon what we, you know, I'd like it if we could, tonight, and I know you have a heavy agenda, but if we could, choose one, so that I can get this question out to them within the next day or two, and say, okay, get us, you know, a, a written response to this of some, you know, no more than five hundred words, or some, you know, something like that. The first is, and I thought that, I actually thought of something like this when we were meeting that night on the fourth, of trying to get the candidates to think about Dyton specifically. So identify a, a specific Dyton community characteristics that is most appealing to them, and have them explain how they would work to sustain that characteristic. So, if they're watching right now, I'm not going to give an example of this, I'll let them make this decision, but have them talk about what it is about Dyton as a community that they find appealing, and how they would work as a town administrator to sustain that characteristic. A second option that I would put out there is an explanation of their career in municipal management, to understand why and how this position right now aligns with their personal values related to municipal government. And include a time of pride that they can point to, or success, to, in which they have served as a municipal official, and a challenge in which a goal was not achieved. Include both, what's worked, what hasn't worked, in their career. At both times, share how those situations were navigated, and what they learned as a result of that. And thirdly, as an option, describe a project or a process in which a fully collaborative approach to problem solving was utilized. Your form of government in Dyton requires a high degree of collaboration. So, we think that this should be useful, telling us about how they collaborated, how they engaged others in addressing the issue at hand, and what was the outcome. Those are some options that we've come up with, but I'm open to other ideas as well.
Mark, you had suggested about the writing sample. Was there a particular question that you?
I like the collaboration, because I think it is such a heavily, that position you have to collaborate with elected officials, appointed boards, you know, and then, you know, everything, yeah, I like collaboration. I would love to hear more about how they do that.
Sure.
No, that was the one that I, as well.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, thank you.
Great, we'll, we'll get them going on that. And then, the great thing about, I think the great thing about that particular question is that that then serves as a, you know, an example that you can then draw upon, or we can draw upon, in the interviewing process. So, you know, we can, we can actually have that in front of you, so you can see how they write, but also understand how they operate, and then use that for some of their questions, for some of the questions that we, we send their way during the interview. I should note that prior to or with your finalist report, I will also include some draft questions, with some suggestions on how we can do that interview process. And we can, and I'll also lay out the meet and greet process that we could, we could use.
Okay.
All right?
Definitely.
All right.
Questions or concerns, so call, Mark, do you have any? All right, Bernie, thank you. Jim, do you want to add anything?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I'll be, I'll be sending that along, and you'll have that, as I say, you should have that by the end of next week.
Okay, we'll get the date and time to you tomorrow.
All right, great, thank you, and I'd be delighted to rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mark? Hi. Sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay, that's okay.
You got some updates for us?
Zoom whiz.
I really am.
Think you're doing good.
Hello, all right, well, thanks for inviting me to give this update. It's what I want to do right now, I just want to talk about things that have been done, and then where we're going. And, you know, for some of you, maybe all of you may not have been in the building recently, so you probably don't know what the interior looks like, so I have some behind-the-scenes construction in-action shots that, that I want to share. So these are going to be pretty cool, I think. So here's, here's a shot, really, no surprise here, this, this, this is the building. I want to actually show you, there's three things I want to point out here, or a couple things. So, one, this right here is going to be the main entrance. There's two access points for this main entrance, one here and one here. There's going to be stairs here, and there's going to be stairs here with an, the actual wheelchair ramp here. This right here i- is one egress. This will be emergency exit only, there will be no entryway through this one at all. There's one additional entrance over here, probably should have chosen a better photo, but there is one over here with an existing wheelchair ramp, that will be staff only. So the public entryways are going to be these two right here. There are two parking lots, it's been decided, this parking lot over here, the smaller one, is going to be the staff parking lot, and the larger one is going to be the open to the general public. Of course, if the overflow flows in here, we're not going to tow anybody, that's, that's not what we're all about, so no need to worry about that. So we say staff only, but we're not, we're not hard and fast on that. So now, I want to get inside here, and here we are. So basically, when you walk in this door here, you're going to be in this area here, and this is what it looks like right now. You know, obviously a bit of a construction site, but the plan for this is we're going to have a bookcase custom-built to the wall right here. And I couldn't order one, because the curve is just, it's so specific to this area, I want it to look nice, not just something that I bought that just got pigeonholed in, because we don't want the square peg, round hole look. We want it, we want it to look nice, it's going to be the first thing people see when they walk in, so we want to take pride in that. So we're going to have a nice bookcase right here, maybe display of seasonal books, that sort of thing. These work shelves will obviously not be there, and we're going to carpet this area, so it's going to look really nice when you first walk in. And then when you walk into the actual main building, this is what you see right now. So we're going to have a few things going on here. This carpet has actually been removed, so I need an updated photo. So we're going to actually have the circulation desk right over here to the right, where a staff member's going to be, I mean, obviously, circulation desk. Going to have a table right here with computer workstations, and actually, you're sitting down, you may not be able to see this, but Selectman, you can see this, on your tables, there's this, there's this right here, comes up, and you can plug, and you can plug right into that. I ordered tables for that, so we'll have power and internet to those tables, we'll also have Wi-Fi. So that's something we're looking forward, so that's going to be pretty cool. To the left is going to be the teen room, and you can see the wainscot here, that's a four-foot-high wainscot. What we're going to do, we're going to build out a storefront with a four-foot-high, matching the wainscot, the four-foot-high wainscot, and it's going to be glass above that with a door. So it's not going to be an all-glass wall into the teen room, it's going to look as if it was built into the building and was there, really, since the building was built. And it's going to match exactly the wainscot, and it's going to be a really nice space for teens to gather, young adults, that's going to be cool. So when you, once you walk past the teen room on the left, the circulation desk on the right, the computer table on the right, you're going to get to the stacks, and there's going to be six rows of shelving. Now, I want to talk about the shelving real quick. This obviously is not the library, but this is what the shelving is going to look like. I want to zoom in real quick, you'll see, we have some metal shelves, and then we have, they're encased in sort of these end panels and canopy tops. The reason we went with this, we had grand plans of, first we wanted to take the shelving from 395 Main Street, that wasn't going to work for various reasons, it wasn't enough, we needed, we needed some more shelving. Then we thought, maybe we'll have them built. That didn't work out for budgetary reasons, then we were going to order all wooden shelving. That also, for budgetary reasons, didn't work out, the budget is what the budget is, and, you know, we, we stay within that. It also didn't help that we had a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar budget that was slashed in half for this, and became eighty-seven thousand five hundred. So what we did, we got a little creative.
How did that happen?
It was a state earmark, and it just, it got, it got cut, so, you know. So that got, so, you know, the budget's what the budget is, and we, it's our job to operate within that. So we went with sort of a hybrid solution here, and so, we have existing shelves, metal shelves, I was able to secure a donation from the New Bedford Whaling Museum for library shelves they weren't using. So we were able to get pretty much all of the metal shelves at no cost. So the only costs we really incurred were the bases, the end panels, and the canopy tops. And so by doing that, we were able to stay within budget on ordering the shelving, which, which, which we were, the committee, I'm speaking just for myself, but I know the committee was very proud of that, and I'm actually probably able to do that as well. And you look at, we could have bought individual shelves, and they're not individual, they're not that expensive, about a hundred and sixty dollars each, but if you're talking a lot of shelves, that's going to add up really quick, especially with delivery. So we were very fortunate that the, that donation came our way, and we were able to secure that shelving. I also want to point out, I ordered a specific end panel here, it's called a slat wall end panel, and so I also ordered plastic clips, so we're going to have periodicals there, so the six rows of shelving are going to also have periodicals there. So that's another way to save some space, and I think that's a really effective way to do it. So that's, that's the main hall, that was, was what it's going to look like. So when you get past the shelving, now, I want you to take a, this is the stage area here, I want to, I want to show you this real quick, this is what it looks like now. This was recently done. This wall's about five feet tall. We're going to do, also going to have another wall here in front of the ramp, so when you're looking, you'll see just a wall here. The reason we decided to do that is we got some feedback from committee members, some staff, and some, some patrons, that it would be sort of a fishbowl effect if we just had sort of glass with people looking into the children's section. So what we decided to do, now, we split the difference, is we have a small wall, now, someone who is a little bit, maybe two inches taller than me, can actually see over that wall and out into the main hall. But if you're in the main hall, you won't be able to see into the children's section, you can see the tops of the shelving, so you'll know that it is a children's section, there's something going on in there. But it eliminates the fishbowl effect, which came up in, in conversation with, with patron staff and, and some committee members. So, and we're actually going to use it for shelving, and I want to talk about shelving real quick, not to belabor the point. If we were to just take shelving and, on our opening day, we move in, and every single shelf is full, that'd be great, but that means we also run out of space immediately when we open, which, which will be bad, because we're building this library not only for the next couple of years, but for many, many years into the future. So, what I did, we basically have thirteen hundred and thirty linear feet of books, and so if we hit that number, we can house the entire library. We want to go above and beyond that, so we can house the library for the future with future acquisitions and all that. And so the shelving arrangement we have here, especially with shelving in front of the stage, allows for six, almost seventeen hundred linear feet, which is more than the thirteen hundred and thirty we needed to hit. So that's, that's really good. So when you walk into a library and you see some empty shelves, that's actually a very good thing. That means that library is healthy, and they can afford to take in acquisitions for the future. And no one comes to Selectman asking for more money for a new library, that's not going to happen. We're, we're planning for the future, so that does not happen. And I can say, we successfully are going to do that.
Awesome.
So you walk up the ramp, or the stairs, or whichever, and you go through this door here, and you're going to see this. This is where the children's librarian's desk is going to be, and you've entered the children's room. And you take a step to your right, and this is the entire children's room here, for the most part. We're going to have tables, chairs, activities closer on this way, we're going to have wall shelving here, then we're going to have two freestanding units here. We're going to get rid of this stuff, obviously, we're not going to make it an obstacle course for the children, that's, you know, it sounds fun.
Looks dangerous.
It sounds fun, but, but it, it might not be the best, you know, practice to do. So there's going to be two freestanding shelving units, and I want to point this out real quick, the, the end panels are going to be slightly different for the children's section. So in the, in the main hall, we had six rows, we had six runs of shelving. So we were able to use slat walls that looked, that looked like this, with sort of set, sort of set dimensions here. For the children's section, we went, we went, we decided to go, or I decided to go, I decided to go this route, with the entire end panel being slat wall, so we can fill it. We only have two of them, freestanding shelves, that, that's what the space can provide, and so I wanted to make sure I ma-, I maximize the space here. And for children, maybe some may not be tall enough, may, maybe this is too tall for some children. So I wanted to make it so that it could be adjustable and accommodate for sizes of pretty much all the children who are going to use the children's section. That's the, you continue to walk through the children's section, you come to this area here, this is the behind-the-scenes staff-only room, there'll be two desks here, and two workstations, one for a cataloger, and one for the library director's desk, so I'm, and also going to be file cabinets here, and a table here for workspace, if I'm paying, you know, paying bills, have sensitive payroll documents, this will not be accessible to the general public, this will be staff only, where I would keep, you know, like I said, bills, payroll documents, anything sensitive that I don't want to, to get out in the general public, that, things that should not be in the general public and kept for staff only will be in this spot here. There's also another room here, this is the reading room, we're going to call the reading room, there's going to be a staff desk here, there's going to be a bookcase here, and there's going to be scrims for the windows. I want to mention real quick, I say scrims, I really mean solar shades, I should have pointed this out. So here, you can see the sun is shining right in through here, these are east and west-facing windows, and we're going to have shelving lined up along here, so the books are going to be exposed to the east and west-facing windows. We want to take care of the books, collection care is a, is a priority of ours, so I ordered these solar shades that are going to go on these windows, and they cut down on ninety-seven percent of UV light. What, what they are, they're basically, they're a mesh shade, you can see out, but it's going to block the harmful sun rays coming in. So we're actually, we're taking, we're going to fit all the books, but we're also going to take care of the books as well. That's the name of our game. And we're doing the same thing in this room here. This is not the table that's going to be there, I ordered a table, the exact kind of table that's going to be in the main hall, with the power, like I illustrated here, same table, that you'll have internet access. I ordered a darker shade, darker scrim here, so it'll be a softer light for this room, so it'll be a nice place to sit, think, do, do some, some private work. This right here, this is non-lead-based paint, it was painted fairly recently, so we're going to restore this fireplace to its original brick. So it's going to be a really, really nice look and feel to this room, and it's, I think it's going to be a space people are going to want to, want to sit and be in. And there's one more space, so if you go up to the children's section, and you're here, instead of taking you right into the children's section, there's a door over here I didn't get in the shot, this is going to be the door into the program room, and this is what it looks like right now. The floor was actually raised, there's some more to be raised, this wall here essentially bisects the room, this is moving as close to the door as allowable by code, so we'll open up the entire room. The floor has been raised, and this is going to be the, we're calling the program room, there's going to be activities in here, but there's also going to be a space, it's going to be a community space for meetings. I know this particular space is used quite frequently for meetings, and on, on some nights during the week, it can be impossible to book with all the committees and sort of meetings taking place here, but this will be a space open to the community to have a meeting if you can't find a space. It'll be bookable, it'll be on our calendar, you go ahead and book, and if you're on the calendar for this space, you've got it. So that, that can be another space that someone can use for basically any sort of, sort of gathering. And that is the tour of the library right now. I do want to acknowledge that coaches, our building committee, Kent Pacheco and Ron O'Connor are here, yes, are here. I know it's not public input, but if they think I missed anything, I, I may respectfully ask if they have anything to say to, to, to jump in, if, if that, if that's okay.
By all means.
Okay.
I don't think we missed anything, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to talk about the committee.
Yep, sure, sure.
Can you let, please, let me speak?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You've appointed a great committee, Nicole's on the committee, as you know, and it's a very active committee. We've been meeting weekly for the past couple of months, and the library trustees have joined us, so we have a joint meeting, and a weekly. And they're very interested in providing a excellent library for the residents of Dyton. I want to give a big shout-out to the man behind me, he's doing a great job, as you know, he walked into, we already started the process, and he walked into our new library, and he's helped us out a lot, so, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
That's the only thing I like to say, but thank you.
Thank you.
Much the same to say, but, one thing, Mark, Mark mentioned the, the donation or the gift of the shelving from the New Bedford Whaling Museum, he, he didn't mention the other gift that we received from the New Bedford Whaling Museum, and that was Mark. That's where Mark came from, with experience in moving the library. We've got a wonderful committee, so thank you for appointing the people who are very dedicated and engaged to this work. In addition to acknowledging Mark as the library director, building commissioner Jim Aguirre, ADA coordinator Jonathan Gale, past town administrator Mike Mullin, and interim administrator Jim Purcell, all been, you know, we've got this crit- and interim administrator Jim Purcell, all been, you know, we've got this critical mass, we've got the planets aligning to make this happen, got a great committee, dedicated trustees who are meeting weekly, we decided to do those combined meetings of the, the building committee and the trustees, so that we don't get stuck on something, you know, so we don't have to, okay, trustees have to vote on this, it'll take another week for us, we're all there, we're all making decisions together, so that things are moving as quickly as, as possible. So, and we've got the, the brilliant planning, uh, of, of Mark, the, the knowledge and experience of the building trade with, with Jim, and Jonathan's passion about, um, accessibility, we're getting all the pieces together so that the town gets the library it deserves that we've been talking about for many years, so.
Good.
I thank you for the appointment of the committee that's doing great work. Thank you.
If I could just say something about the committee, um, like they had said, I mean, they're meeting weekly, it's a lot, and they're not, they're not short meetings, um, some of them are very lengthy, so I mean, this group, I love to get 'em together and get something else pushed forward, because, um, they're really working hard, and they're doing great work, so I really appreciate it, you guys.
Uh, we appreciate it very much, too. You know, often we say thank you, and sometimes it's just not enough, but, uh, really, uh, I know it's gonna be something that town's gonna be very proud of, and it's gonna get a lot of use, and the residents are gonna be happy, and, and that's all because of, of, of you guys, and, and thank you. Yes, Ron?
Yes, gentlemen, my note on my phone, I'm not accustomed to doing this, but...
Sure.
The BP students, we just talked briefly about...
Oh, yeah. That's right, that's right, yeah, I'm sorry, I'd be remiss to, see, I, I knew they'd put out something I forgot to say. Um, so we've just started phase two, um, really, of, of the construction, so this right here that I showed you, um, i- is part of the phase two, but the phase one components was actually completed, um, by the BP students, and you can see the ramp, they constructed the stairs, they did a lot of, um, the electrical, um, electrical department, electrical program, um, did a lot of the wiring, especially in the basement, so, um, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of work they did, um, very good work that they did, um, which was able to, which will show, which is showing right here, and it's a lot of stuff that we don't have to take out to bid, or have a contractor, um, do, because they, they did it themselves, and it was very high-quality work. So we're very grateful and thankful for the work that they did.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you for...
Does work happen there every day?
Uh, y- yes, um, there was a bit of a pause after the BP students, um, wrapped up their work on their contract, after their school year ended, and we were waiting on plans from the architect, but once we got those plans, um, we have a contractor, Plan B Constructors on a contract, he started work, uh, last week.
Okay.
And so there's pretty much work every Monday through Friday, they're, they're now going on for the last, um, starting last week, and I anticipate that being the case all the way right up, right up through.
Sure.
Maybe not in the dead of winter, depending how it goes, but, but...
Right.
When we can get work in, we're, we're gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a timeline for...
Yeah, that's a great question, so, um, the most recent timeline that I have right now is that I may get occupancy, um, in August, at some point, maybe, um, that, that's based on pretty many conversations with building commissioner Jim Aguirre. If I get occupancy in August, that, that would be ideal.
It's August.
Correct, yes, 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 August twenty, twenty-five, sorry.
Okay.
Um, if I get occupancy in August, that would be ideal, because then I could start to move three ninety-five Main Street over there while keeping the two locations open. Um, and I don't wanna close in the summer, that's, that's the busiest time, we got a lot of programs going on. Um, and then, with that model, once September hits, then I'll close both locations, um, and move them into the new space. Um, assuming that with August, I would've moved a good chunk, if not all of three ninety-five over there already, so that would be the smoothest, most efficient move in my mind. If occupancy comes earlier, even better. If occupancy comes later, um, we, we would shut down as soon as we get occupancy, if it comes in September first, we shut down then, if we get it in September fifteenth, we'll shut down then, and we may be shut down longer, um, but we'll be moving more during that time. So, we're looking maybe fall twenty twenty-five right now. Um, there was a time when I was saying we could be moving in early twenty twenty-five, I don't mind saying that, it's always good to be aspirational, especially with a construction project, um...
Yeah.
The aspirations maybe don't play out in reality, 'cause things can, I mean, things happen, life gets in the way, it happens, um, but I don't mind saying this aspirational timeline as the timeline, it's, it, it just feels more realistic, 'cause it has an actual month attached to it, instead of just a beginning of, which can be fairly amorphous and, and can move, so I feel confident saying that August, give or take a little bit, may be when I could get occupancy, and then we could open shortly thereafter.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, thank, thank you.
Just one more thing, you're an excellent presenter, so thank you for that presentation and coming out tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Um, and all of our library staff is wonderful, as is our building committee and library board of trustees, but I just wanna say, every time I have a conversation with someone in town hall, and it's about the library, it kinda always ends that Mark is doing a really good job, and we're lucky to have him, so, thank you for you and what you do.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for joining our community.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ron, are you going to talk about hiring the, or Mark, are you gonna continue?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, okay, so I just, real quick, I wanna talk about, I have a staff member that is going out on approved medical leave, um, at some point in, supposed to be either August or September, I think it's gonna be September, um, and given the current situation, where we're, we have two spaces open, we're in the process of filling a full-time position that is currently vacant, uh, which, by the way, we're gonna start interviews on that really soon, really shortly, um, we could be in a position where we have to maintain current library workflows, uh, two spaces, with only two full-timers and one part-time non-union who has a hard cap, um, at, at under twenty hours per week. So I, what I did was I proposed to the trustees, um, hiring a temporary, um, part-time technical services librarian, um, to fill in, and I, I broke it down budget-wise for the trustees, and I'm gonna break it down here, essentially. Um, so, I, I, I can go over the document, um, if you have any questions about it, but what this does, it breaks down, but, money that is allocated towards the current staff, um, what will be allocated towards the staff to be hired, um, that will be the full-time position that would be hired at some point in September, and the temporary technical services librarian, and it shows I have a remaining balance of just north of six thousand dollars, um, to take on this position, um, so it would not be any stress, it would be no additional fund, with no additional, um, budgetary constraints, we wouldn't be going over budget, it fits in the current budget, um, and so trustees recommended that, to move forward with this, and I'm here before you now, saying that doing this would be good for the library, 'cause we could maintain library processes and keep the two spaces open, but also, that, maybe just as important, that it fits in the current budget, and we would not be going over budget to do this.
Okay.
All right?
That's always good.
Yeah, I think, a little bit more than good, that's, that's always great.
So the library trustees are separately elected, so they have their own budget, are you just looking for basically a, um, so they would be the ones who appoint?
Yes, and they, they have voted on, on, on this previously, and they voted, they voted, uh, it was unanimous, yes.
So it's, my say is basically just for the clerical contract, we just have to give our seal of approval, too, is that basically it?
I, I, I think tonight, uh, uh, Mr. Pacheco is, in acknowledgement by the, uh, by the board, because this is a temp, it wouldn't be a union, uh, position, if it were a union position, I might say that it is indeed a, an action item, because you're parties to the, uh, to the CBA. Uh, but in this case, I think, um, you know, Mark is pretty good on his feet, and he's got vacancy issues, and, uh, and, and he has a plan to fill it in, and...
Nice, awesome.
Yep, okay.
Very good.
Yes, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd make a motion to accept the, um, letter dated August fifteenth, um, as presented to hire a temporary clerical staff member for the library.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Peter Carrington, aye. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
You got free airtime here, Mark, you wanna talk about your golf tournament?
I would love to, I would love to talk about the golf tournament, um, so the Friends of the Dyton Public Library are having their second annual golf tournament, last year, um, they raised ten thousand dollars for the library based off this golf tournament, and I'd like to, I'd like to, I mean, how would that look, if I come in, and then we raise less money for, we, we, so we have to, we have to top that, I mean, we have to top that, just, just, for, I mean, for the library, but, but no, I mean, in all seriousness, um, the goal is to top that, um, if you, if you golf, or if you know any golfers, it's gonna be Hazleton, the date, I, ooh, did I write it down? Twenty-third?
September fifteenth.
Fifteenth, September fifteenth, um, eleven o'clock, there's, if you're not a golfer, there's also a dinner after, from what I hear, is gonna be a good spread of North End Italian food, so if you don't wanna golf, don't like golfing, but still wanna support the library, um, you can always, you can take a dinner-only ticket, and that, you're welcome to do that as well, um, but, that, that's, that's what's going on there. I hope to see many people there, I'm not a golfer myself, I'm gonna be entering, you may wanna show up just to, uh, just to see that, um, so that, that, that should be pretty fun, um, believe me, I, I, I say that with a huge smile, that should be fun, um, seeing me golf, but, but in all seriousness, please, um, support the library, let's see if we can top the ten thousand dollar mark from last year, um, and thank you for the free airtime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me tonight.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like I should start a round of applause or something.
I know, huh? Doesn't owe any job.
That was quite a show, Mark.
(applause)
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Board. Um, I was here, I guess, it might've been two years ago, um, with my colleague Margaret McLean. Margaret is actually the municipal advisor to the town of Dyton, as well as Bristol Plymouth Vocational, but she decided to go on vacation, and so you've got me tonight, which is fine, because I've been speaking to a lot of communities, uh, since the last time we've met, um, with the vocational school, the impact of, um, the school particularly, debt service, uh, that it has on the member communities. So this is not anything new to me, it's, um, I actually, I work with Diamond over in Fall River, who is in the process, Tri-County, uh, also as well, with their member communities, and of course, understanding, before I get into my presentation, that, um, when we take a look at our member communities, not everybody's fits in the same dynamic, not everybody has the same demographics, not everybody has the same population, not everybody has the same wealth, um, i- in their communities, and other factors, um, obviously, um, you know, diverse economic, um, revenue sources, all that kinda stuff. So Margaret and I, of course, I'm familiar with Dyton, I've worked with Dyton, Rehoboth Regional School District, as well as the town of Rehoboth, um, so my presentation to Dyton tonight is really about fiscal sustainability, okay, and we take a look, and these are numbers that are factual numbers, it's not something that we're making up, um, but I did wanna give you an overview, now that, um, the school project has passed, right, before, two years ago, we were hypothetical, right, um, a- and now it's real, um, and so I'll go on to Karen the next, and, um, again, my background is I've been doing municipal finance for over thirty-five years, I'm a graduate of Wheaton College in Norton, Massachusetts, and I have a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University, I am also a Series Fifty Licensed Municipal Advisor, and again, I think I have, over my career, has issued over seven hundred million in municipal bonds, primarily through the state of Massachusetts.
You're the town administrator?
I actually, you know, you were saying that, and, um, I didn't wanna say this, but I'm thinking to myself, when, um, I was like the only finance person at Suffolk in my class, and most of the people were, um, town, you know, wannabe town administrators, or they were town administrators, and, uh, the day I graduated, I actually looked at the town adminis, the town manager over in Antucket, who was also a, um, a, a friend of mine at Wheaton College, we both, so we both graduated from two schools together, and I looked at her, and I said, Libby, two years it took me to realize, this is not what I wanna do, I think I'll stay on the finance side of things, but, uh, never say never, okay, so, um, so that's, so that's my little background. So I'm gonna tell you what you already know, is that, um, the special, special election occurred, the project has been voted, uh, it was through a district-wide election, which means that, uh, maybe the town of Dyton did not approve it in the majority, but here's the project, and now we have to find a way to pay for it. So Bristol Plymouth, as you know, if you're out there and you've been following this, it's a three hundred and five million dollar project, it is being grant-funded through the Mass School Building Authority, which has committed about a hundred and twenty-five point five million to the project, uh, through their funding agreement, and that also includes, um, MSBA did acknowledge, uh, within the last year, that these projects, particularly, particularly these vocational school districts, um, the cost is just enormous, um, yeah, than you would for a regular high school, um, obviously, because the programs that are included in it, and the fact that most of these, um, vocational school districts really haven't done major capital improvements to their buildings, since they were built in the, you know, some of them in the early seventies. So it seems like we're having a flux of these vocationals now, right, everything's hitting at the same time everywhere throughout the state, it seems, um, and, and in an environment that we've seen escalating cost, right, I mean, this is like a perfect storm, you know, maybe not very perfect, but, you know, we've seen the cost escalation, we all, we're all experiencing that, so these projects are very, very expensive. But knowing that, MSBA did go back, and they did make some allowances, um, to a lot of these vocational school districts, and some of the regional school districts, to increase the, uh, grant reimbursement, um, for the square footage, so, um, I believe that is factored in to that hundred and twenty-five point five million, um, that MSBA will be contributing to the eligible project cost of, of the school. So that looks like, for the member towns, that leaves us with a hundred and eighty million dollar bill, um, that we've got to fund between the member towns. Dyton, this year, is estimated right now between twenty-five and twenty-seven million dollars of the project, and this is based on the student population, of, currently it's a hundred and twelve students, or eight point ten percent of the enrollment in the district. Um, obviously, that could change, too, but that's what we have, and that's the number that we're basing some of our analysis tonight on. The district has been issuing short-term notes, um, for the last year or so, to get the cash flow on this project, um, obviously, Bristol Plymouth has not been in the municipal market, um, for a number of years, so what we usually do is issue some short-term debt, gets them out into the market, um, you know, the underwriters who buy the paper get to know who they are, and get to kind of, you know, get into their financial situation, and the situation of the member communities. Um, and also, we didn't wanna go out to the bond market ahead of time without knowing the true cost, um, you know, you don't wanna permanently finance bonds, if you know your, all your contracts are, are not good, that you haven't gone over budget. And I do have to say, Margaret did, when I were talking, she, um, told me that the project is under budget, so, um, what I am presenting to you tonight in this last bullet is, we're estimating that the Dyton share is going to be roughly, um, nine hundred and ten thousand a year, inclu, that includes principal and interest, okay? And this is, and this is, and this is the worst, this is the worst-case scenario, okay, and this is, okay, we are, we are looking at, one, um, you know, there's estimates of what the market is right now, as far as interest rates, okay? I think we've all been watching to see what the Fed is going to do, um, you know, what happens with the elections, and all these other variables that may come into play, as far as, um, interest rates in the market. There's also, uh, the federal government has grant programs under the Infrastructure Act, uh, for, is that me?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, that is Taylor Swift on my phone, and that's my husband calling me, and he should know better.
Have a taste.
Sorry, sorry. Still a kid at heart, you know? So this is the worst-case scenario. You can throw that person through the window, Jim, if you'd like. So this is, like I say, this is the worst-case scenario that we're looking at. We're hoping it does come, obviously, the district is expected to issue 120 million in permanent, permanent bonds in February of 2025. Okay? So what that means for the district is fiscal 2026, all member communities will be taking the full hit of principal and interest on the first, of the financing for this 120 million. And that is scheduled to be a 30-year bond. Okay? Like I said, they're looking at grants. Nothing has been in stone yet, but I know that the district is looking at any revenue source they can to try to ease the burden of this very costly project. But in the end, it's costly, right? We all know. It's a big number, you know, but we'll take anything we can to reduce it. So that's, that's where we're at as far as the district coming. And this is kind of a, leads into the budget for the Town of Dayton in fiscal '26 to take on, let's say it is $900,000 of debt service. The board has put on the November election ballot a question for a debt exclusion. And I'm going to just describe what that is because sometimes terminology gets mixed up. And when people bring, they say operating overrides, capital exclusions, debt exclusion. So I thought I would just kind of briefly, before we go into Dayton's numbers, just give you a quick explanation of what these, what the terminology is. Overrides, when a town goes and passes an override, that is a permanent increase into the tax levy of the town. As we all know, in Massachusetts, we are bound in the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2. So we have to live, we can't just keep raising taxes. We have to live within that 2 and 1/2. An override allows the town to exceed that levy limit, and that becomes permanent. That's not what we're looking to do for the BP project. But just so people, when they say, oh, we're going for an override. No, you're not going for an override. You are not looking to increase the levy of the town permanent. Okay? And again, I'm gonna, if you have questions, please raise your hand. Other than that, I just feel like a talking head up here as we go through. But if something is out there and you really want to raise your hand before I go on, you know, please. So instances of overrides, what I see with communities doing is, you know, if it's for salary, for staff, for budget, all right, ongoing budget things that you're going to have to pay for, you need to pay for in your budget now and going forward, okay? And then we have capital, and the next page, capital and debt exclusions. So a capital exclusion is if, say you have a fleet of police cruisers, you want to be one and done, and you're going to raise that money for one year for that capital purchase, okay? It's one year, it's done, you know, and it's usually earmarked with specific, usually equipment. And then you have debt exclusions. And that's where the voters are going to be looking at in November when they make their decisions of whether they want to debt exclude the BP assessment debt service from the Prop 2 and 1/2. The debt exclusion goes away once the bonds are matured. So it's only for the life of the issue of the bonds. It is taxed over and above the town's tax levy. Goes on with the assessors have a DE1 form, so the town is able to raise the debt service for that particular year over and above the tax levy to pay for the debt service on the bonds. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Does the debt exclusion have to be for a full amount?
You can put it on for a portion.
A portion of it.
You can. See, what will happen is the assessor's office, in conjunction with the treasurer's office files, what they call the DE1 form, you may be familiar with it. And that's where you basically pick up all that excess of your debt exclusion, the debt that you have outstanding now for the police station.
Yep.
Your assessments that you currently have for the outstanding Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District projects that were done years ago that are still not matured. Those all go on the DE1 form, and you can put a portion of it on, on the debt exclusion.
Okay.
Okay?
Two quick questions.
Sure.
For, I'll ask them both, so maybe you can answer at the same time. If, the first, the first question is, if the percentage values change, and they are changing, for the number of students that are going to BP, for example, let's just say in 2030 it becomes, goes from 100, I think 10 or something. Let's say it goes to 230, and the percentage goes higher.
Mm-hmm.
Does that change the debt exclusion from that point, or is it locked in in 2026?
No, see, when you go for a debt exclusion, the question does not have a number attached to it. The question on a ballot, on an exclusion ballot, basically will say, do you, you know, do you vote in the affirmative to exclude the debt service on the, you know, Bristol-Plymouth Vocational School District, the assessment to the Town of Dayton, to the Town of Dayton? So it doesn't have a number on there. It's just you are agreeing that whatever that assessment is. So if you do have an increase in enrollment, okay, the district will send a capital and an operating assessment letter to the town after their budget gets passed, whereby the town knows what they need to budget for, and the assessor will know what number to put on the DE1 form. So if there is a fluctuation in that percentage allocation of debt service, it gets picked up on, as part of the exclusion, okay? So that number may fluctuate, like you, you know.
And then the second question was, with the exclusion, where does that, is that primarily from residential tax basis, corporate tax basis?
It's the full, full tax. It's, we have a breakdown of the residential here in the, but it's, it's part of all your tax levy. So I know you have a split tax rate, if I believe correctly, between your, your, your commercial, industrial, and residential. So it's not just the residents that pay. It's, it's, it's part of the whole tax levy.
Does that, does that have a breakdown based on residential versus commercial versus corporate work, or the value per resident?
We did do one just for residents, because usual, you know, your commercial entities, some people just, you know, don't have the vote, but they're going to get the assessment in their taxes. But we do have one for the residential where we've carved out that valuation, so you can take a look at it from a residential standpoint. So did you have a?
Yes. Based on what you just said, how will the voters in November know how much it's going to cost them for this project? Based on the fluctuation of all these numbers, how will the voters have a real understanding of how much it's going to cost them?
I believe the district is putting forth a, you know, a impact analysis. They may have, I'm sure they've run a couple of schedules in the past to show. I mean, are you going to get an exact number? I mean, as far as what your, your impact is going to be, are you going to get, you're going to get a ballpark number, basically, on the best assumptions of what, what do we think the 120 million out in the market's going to look like, right? What interest rate that's going to look like? So what that debt service is going to look like, okay? And like I said, that, this number here is a worst-case scenario. And what happens in the bond market, particularly on a large issuance of 120 million, an underwriter comes in with what we call a premium, all right? And that's a cash, that's basically cash to the town, and it lowers the true interest cost of the bond. So that's how underwriters bid. They play with this called, this premium to kind, kind of, and like I said, it's cash up, it's cash to the town. And so they use this to lower the true interest cost on the bonds. Bonds are awarded on the lowest true interest cost. So on the day of the sale, now Margaret will be doing that when she sells these 120 million for Bristol Plymouth, there's going to be a premium on, on that. It could be a couple of million dollars. The state statute for premiums in Massachusetts mandates that you take the premium the day of the sale, and you resize the bonds with that premium to a lower amount, okay? So if it's 120, it's probably going to come in less. And I know the interest rates that are being projected are on a conservative basis. So it's not like it's going, you know, we've, we've looked at it, you know, looking at the market of where it is, you know, where we think it may go. And we've built in an estimated interest rate, but that rate on those bonds is conservative. So Jim, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. The other thing too is to remember that when we do issue bonds in the market, it's a standard that we have an eight-year call on bonds. So if rates should go significantly downward, we have the ability to refinance them. So that's usually an eight-year, what we call an eight-year call. After the eighth year, we take a look, and if there is a present value savings on the bonds, we will refinance them. So to date, we've had four town, member towns that have already voted to exclude their capital assessment from Bristol Plymouth, Berkeley, Bridgewater, Free Town, and Rehoboth so far have gone to their member, to their constituents and have voted to exclude their assessment.
Did any of those towns vote no for the?
Rainham did vote no. Whether-
They haven't voted yet.
They have not voted yes, yet. The first vote came in, it was a no. And whether they go back or not, I work with Rainham, so. So that's kind of a top view. Now let's, let's get in and let's take a look. As I say, we take the deep dive into what this means, particularly for the, for the Town of Dayton. This little pie chart here, sorry, it's hard to read, but it is basically a breakout of the FY '25 budget without the Plymouth, without the, excuse me, the, the school Bristol-Plymouth coming into play. And I just want you to think of this pie, because I always say to people, it's when you're talking about, obviously, the budgets in Massachusetts and the provisions of Prop 2 and 1/2. So everybody, all your departments, all your, they have a piece of the pie, okay? Part of your budget. If one slice increases, right, something has to decrease, right? Because the pie isn't going to get any bigger, right? To raise, you know, Prop 2 and 1/2, it doesn't give you a lot of extra revenue to fit in the excess debt service that we're talking about. And this is without a debt exclusion. So I always say, keep your, just keep that in mind as we move forward in this presentation of, of what this means as far as this pie is what you're getting, basically, on what you're collecting in taxes, what you're collecting on your levy. And this is how you've allocated all of these expenses, if you will, that's in town. So we're going to get into the budgetary impact. And this is off, these numbers are off of actually the Department of Revenue, the town's primary levy worksheets and their recap sheets that they file with the Department of Revenue to set their tax rate. So the number I really want to hone into you is, we have got the, you have basically, I'll walk you through it, the property tax, okay? And this is on the Prop 2 and 1/2. Your base is basically your prior, your, your prior year levy limit. So in, you can see the correlation of fiscal '23, the levy limit there of 20,807 carries over up to the primary levy limit at the beginning of the column in fiscal 2024. And then you add to that your, if there's any amended growth, which you did not have in 2024, and then the allowable 2 and 1/2% increase, that's your Prop 2 and 1/2 number, that brings you to 520,000. I'm in fiscal '24 right now. And then any new growth gets added in. And then they add in your debt exclusions, and then they, and then they add in what you need to, what your maximum allowable levy is. I wish I had probably, that should have been bigger, because nobody understands what I'm saying here. And then the town does a recap of, you know, what they're going to raise for the tax levy, okay? What, they look at what revenues are coming in from the state, from local receipts. And the difference between the maximum allowable levy and the raise and appropriate on taxes is what we call an excess levy capacity. So in fiscal '24, the town had roughly 141,300,000 in excess levy capacity, which means that they didn't tax to the, to the limit they could have. They basically left 141,000 that they didn't raise through taxation. Right? You're going, okay? So now we come into the '25 budget, where we are, the same process again, right? The, the prior year's number from the levy limit gets put into the '21 budget. You go through all your, your new growth gets added in, your 2 and 1/2% increase that's allowed by Prop 2 and 1/2. You add in your debt exclusions, and then you factor in what your tax rate is going to be for fiscal 2025, what you're going to raise and appropriate through taxes. And in fiscal 2025, we now have excess levy capacity of 148,313,000. Okay? I know it's a lot of numbers going through here, but you're going to see, what my, I want you to remember this 148,313 number, because that's going to flow in when we look at what's going to happen in 2026, as I stated, and that's when the BP full PNI debt service comes in, okay? So if we go in, and this is with the school debt, okay, and it assumes no enrollment changes, we've had to make some estimated assumptions, if you will, of what's going to happen in 2026. But we do know the maximum allowable levy limit's going to carry over from 2025. And what we end up with is, and again, we've made some assumptions, right? We've made some new growth assumptions for 2026. We've made some revenue assumptions and obviously expenditure assumptions. But we've also made the assumption, what we're seeing all across, not just Massachusetts, but the whole country, is that the expenditure columns are getting larger than the revenue columns, okay? Revenues are basically flat. I can tell you, this, this past year, in all the 35-plus years that I've been working in this business, I have never seen so many communities that are going for operating overrides. Those are what we talked about before, permanently, you know, increasing the tax levy. And it's because there's a lot of pressure. It's a lot of school pressures, right? Cost of schools, cost of transportation, cost of students, you know, so cost of, you know, special ed, cost of, you know, school choice. And that's just the general cost that we all know. It's the cost of heating buildings. It's the cost of putting gas in your vehicles. And then we look at the revenue side, and revenues, basically, your local receipts are not as robust as they used to be. Okay? I mean, so we're keeping that in mind when we're making these assumptions for what's going to happen in 2026. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, if you wanted me to keep going. So we went through that same process of levy, of levy limits, new growth, all this stuff, adding in, you know, the debt exclusions, you know, what the town is, needs to raise on its tax levy. We did that, all the same math for fiscal 2026. So we came out with, this is before we added in the BP debt service, we talked about that excess levy capacity. And we, our assumptions put us at about 383,000, that there would be extra levy capacity, that the town had not, you know, taxed to its full allowable levy, maximum allowable levy. And then we added in a $910,000 debt service payment in fiscal '26. We are in, now in the red, $526,000 that- That, where does that come from? And so I get back to the thing, back to the pie chart, if you will, is where do you take that $526,000? If it's not debt excluded, it has to be part of that pie somewhere, and that pie is not getting any bigger. So it puts a strain on the town to basically say, all right, we have $526,000, we need to, we have to make the debt service payment. And if it's something we have to, that debt service is paying within our levy, because it's not debt excluded, we have to find a way to come up with either $526,000 of additional revenue that's going to come in for the next 30 years, or you have to, you know, look at your expenditure sheet.
Is there a whole lot to try to cut?
It's, it's, it's a big, it's a big number. It's, there's, you know, what do you do with $300 million in, you know, the member communities? And we all know, this is pretty much a rural, other than Taunton. And in Middleborough, there's not a lot of diverse tax base. And again, I mean, two years ago, we had this hypothetical, and I'm coming back now. Now, at least, we can walk through some numbers, and I know this handout is going to be up on the website, maybe, Jim? For people to understand, because I'm talking a lot of numbers, and I, I just know some of you gloss over, and I'm sure people watching this at home are saying, I have no idea what the hell she's talking about.
Yes, at a minimum, but we'll be discussing with the board the next steps tonight. Tonight was the, for lack of a better term, the problem statement.
Yeah, okay.
And where do we go from here? There's 76 days from today.
Yep.
To November 5th. And so there's.
So I'll continue on. So that's our, you know, looking at BP, and then you asked, sir, about the tax impact, the residential. So I do have a worksheet here that breaks out based on the fiscal 2024 valuations. 2025 is not out yet, but it does give you an estimated interest rate impact. Bottom line, I, we like to use $100,000 as the multiplier, because everybody's sitting here for a home value, okay? Can quick, do the math for their own, for their own personal valuations. So as far as Bristol Plymouth debt service, $910,000, okay? You'd be looking at a house, $100,000 per $100,000, you'd be looking at about $56 per That's, and I'm talking, this is what the impact would be on a debt exclusion, okay? I think we also ran it on the impact of an average single family. We're using assessed value, and that is about $455,000. And that would be about 254, round up 255, $255 a year for the increase on an average single family. And I'll stop there if you have any questions on that. But that's just, sir, is on the residential. We didn't add in anything on that, what the commercial impact is, because it's the residents that's going to be going and voting this. So to wrap it up, as I, you know, and more of a forward, when you're looking at the considerations of how do we absorb this BP debt into, into the town's budget going forward, you need to look at what's coming up and what you may be looking at down the road. Got the, we have the library. Fire station is in discussion. You've got the Main Street reconstruction project that you'll be looking at. And I know that Dyton-Rehoboth, the school district, has been accepted into the eligibility period with Mass School Building Authority for a new Dyton middle school. So some of those things, again, there's other capital that's coming up, and how you absorb that within your tax levy on top of the BP is, as you can see, is really going to strain the budget in the town of, town of Dyton.
Can you, for that, the figure that you just gave, distress a little bit further? That 900-plus thousand, is that open to, is that expected to hold steady? Let's assume that is the figure. Is that going to hold steady for the 30 years or 40 plus that?
No, once the bonds are issued, once that, like I said, and we're basing this on the $120 million. I, in my presentation at the beginning, said we could, we're looking at basically 180 total. But that's 120, basically, we look at a cash flow, right? The cash flow for the project, what's needed. You also have to take into consideration IRS spending, so you don't get into any arbitrage situations of, you know, what, what are the needs, cash flow needs for that project, say, for the next two years? $120 million, so that's a majority, obviously, of the financing that's going to be done for the district. We do hold out a little, because, towards the end, because we don't know what the final Mass School Building Authority grant is going to be. So we don't do any permanently, we don't, we permanently finance the last tranche of bonds after the MSBA has concluded their audit, because their language is, they only reimburse based on eligible project cost. So when this final audit comes out, we, we won't bond the final, the district share until that audit is out, and we know exactly what the district, the final share is going to be.
So the reason I'm asking you that question is because if you, if you do the basic math, what you're getting at over 30 years, I'm using your children for your math figure, but if you, approximately, so over 30 years, per household on one level, that comes out to roughly about $7,600, $7,600 over the.
Over 30 years, yep.
But if you make adjustments for inflation, and this figure we have to hold steady, and you're looking at inflation rate otherwise, for example, of 2, 2.5% a year, then that real value is actually lower, correct?
Yeah.
It's not really $7,600, it's probably like $2,800, $3,000, whatever it might come out to, we don't know, but over that 30-year period, once it's readjusted for inflation.
Well, those numbers are not going to change, okay? That, once that debt service is, once in February, that sells, that's day of sale in 2025, when they go to the market, that debt service schedule is set in stone. Rates go, you know, rates go up or whatever, that is not going to change. The only way it is going to change is if rates go lower, and we can grab a present value savings. And we can refinance it. And we're not going to refinance it for more, we're going to, only if we can reduce it. So that is set in stone. That 30, that 30-year schedule is going to be based on a level debt service. So that's why I can say, you know, it comes out to not, basically, $910,000 a year on a level debt service.
Thank you.
So do you have any questions, or do we have concerns?
Jim, did I miss anything that you wanted me to bring up?
Not, not tonight. I think the.
You know, I guess in the end, it's, it's, it's going to be tough on the town's budget when you look at the numbers, and, you know, you make the assumptions, and I think we're pretty conservative in what we were estimating for 2026, that it's going to be tough to absorb that into the budget.
And that's the message. And even if there are fluctuations based on market conditions and, in bottom-line construction costs and things like that, these are, they are nevertheless representative figures, you know? They're as close to, to being right on point as, as we can get under the present circumstances. But they are representative, representative numbers. And I think the, you know, what's been, what's been demonstrated here, this is just math. You know, they are our present circumstances, these are the representative costs, here's the math, there is a levy, you know, the levies, you know, capacity deficit, you know, begins in fiscal '26, unless.
Yeah. I mean, we talked about this excess levy capacity, again, to your point, and that just means that basically the town has not taxed to its maximum levy that it could have. And even when we were a little conservative, and we had a higher number excess levy capacity for 2026, once, as you saw, once we threw in the debt service, we were, we were underwater by over $500,000.
So as I said, Mr. Chairman, earlier, you know, tonight is the problem statement, there's 76 days between now and, in the election day. Let's set our compass points, however the board so directs, we, we shall do.
Okay. Well, thank you for that presentation. Thank you very much. I, I regret that. Did you want to view any more questions?
No.
So just moving forward, I kind of have a vision for how we want to get as much information to the voters, so this was so super helpful if people want to do a deep dive and look into, into things. So what I would like to see is a page dedicated on either the Board of Selectmen part of the website, or the Town Administrator part of the website, where folks can go to research what a debt exclusion looks like for Dyton. So this would be one of the documents on there. So I'd like to see this hopefully tomorrow on the website, on, like I said, either Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator, and linked to the homepage, so that way their folks can go ahead and research it. And at our, I think, moving forward, at our next two meetings, there's a couple more things that I think the voters will need. One, a simple one-page sheet, like what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, because the way that question, this phrase, could be confusing to a voter. So just, Berkeley put out a, a one-page summary of what a yes and a no vote, and it kind of, it's just to help educate voters, because you might walk into the polls thinking a yes vote means something, and we get it wrong. So just a one-page summary would be nice on the website. And our town adminis, prior Town Administrator, Mullen, did a presentation on if this were to fail, and we took every department, and we spread the debt evenly, what each department's cut would have to make. So it'd be nice to have an updated version of that. So that would be harder to do than the one-page. So I'm thinking, if at our next meeting, we had the one-page summary to discuss, and then at our following meeting, we had an updated version of that presentation, I don't know if it's the town accountant, or if you, our financial advisors can help us with that. But that would be really illustrative, not only to the public, to see what, what that would look like for our departments, but also for our departments to plan and advocate for themselves, so know, hey, if this fails, I have to, I'm going to be looking at a, so much of a budget cut, you know, in FY '26. So that would be nice, not only for our departments, but for the public. And I was thinking, for the month of October, if we could have a highway east signs that basically point the, that says we're having a debt exclusion, and points the public to call Town Hall, or look at the website, because some, some folks aren't watching our meetings, or looking at the website, and they're not going to, they're not going to know what that means. So we can catch folks on the road. And one last thought. This PowerPoint, could we distribute it to, to have it, like, on the counter, the tax collector, the assessors, Selectmen's office, Council on Aging if they'd accept it, maybe Lincoln Village if they would want some, police station, fire station, just anywhere where serving the residents. Like, I just want to make sure that folks, so choose they have access to this information, because we want to educate as many voters as we possibly can. I said a lot.
No, it's okay. It's all good. My only concern would be, there's a lot of numbers, as well as language, that the average person might not understand. And we have to simplify it somehow. And as great as this presentation was, or certainly, very knowledgeable she is, as she is, it's, it's going to be a lot for any one person to digest.
Yes.
I wonder if there should be some kind of, the biggest thing is going to be the impact on what each household is going to pay. I, I think that's what their, their number one concern.
I agree.
And to say that if you have a house that's, for every $100,000 that your house is worth, this is what's going to be, is going to be the most important information that's out there.
Yes.
So with that said, we should have that, as well as some kind of key that will explain what a, what a maximum levy is, some of these terms that she's put in her slide presentation, because people are going to, not everybody's going to understand what a levy is.
I think the, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think the earlier suggestion about a, about a one-page, you know, a page full of bullet points, you know, what this, what a yes and what a vote, what a no vote would mean, presented in a mature fashion, not in, in alarming fashion, but, but just stating the facts. Yeah, it would certain, certainly be a distillation of, you know, the presentation that we heard tonight, but hopefully in, you know, in simpler truthful terms, you know? We can start working on it.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Is that something that we?
No, I don't think it requires a.
Okay, we're all in agreement?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, is that something that, would that be something that you think you guys can hit, like, would that work for next meeting? Do you think we'd be able to get that one-page?
I think so.
And do you think it's, you guys would be able just to make a page tomorrow on the Dyton website? Like, just to create a, just a one-page that we can just link this PowerPoint to for folks?
To link the PowerPoint, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, consider that done.
Okay. And at the same time, could we do a Facebook announcement with the presentation as well, just so folks could just click right, you know, on social media and have access to it as well? And lastly, is that something that you guys, do you guys think you could distribute this PowerPoint to those departments? Yeah? Okay. I just, thank you, I appreciate it.
We had a, through you, Mr. Chairman, we had a department heads meeting a week or two ago, and I didn't, I didn't hand these out to the department heads, but we did, we did discuss a number of things, including, including the debt exclusion question. I didn't want to hand it out to staff, other than the ones, you know, like Serena, who helped us with the presentation, before you got a chance to, you know, the board got a chance to see it in, in public, so, so we were waiting on that. Everyone will get it. In fact, I, I do know that at least, at least one department head saw it as part of our meeting package, you know, they accessed it late this afternoon and pulled it down already, so.
Nice.
But that was just a Selectmen's meeting package, but we'll, we'll spread it around.
Cool, cool, awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Could we take the?
I was just going to say that.
Oh, yeah.
No, go ahead.
A motion to take the Board of Health appointment to.
Can we take A and B as well, of new, of old business?
Right, we'll just link the whole thing together.
I'll second that.
Well, it's just going to be before the town report, Town Administration Report and the Selectmen's Report, because the first thing would come up would be the nurse and the health agent appointment. So when Barbara's here, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, the last time I saw you, you had left.
Oh, I was just outside, I had a phone call.
Oh, okay. Sure. So if you want to take it now, that's fine. You can do that.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're taking this out of order before the announcements. Barbara, can you come up for a second? We have some questions for you. And I know you want to talk about the nurse and the health agent.
Could we do the appointment first?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Mark had a concern, and I'll let him express it to you.
Well, I really felt like it was for the board and the administrative staff that worked for the Board of Selectmen. I didn't feel like it was a concern with Barbara.
No, but just so she is aware of what the concern was.
All right. So my concern was that we, at our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen meeting. meeting, the Board, and I had to abstain, there just wasn't an agreement on who they were going to choose for the member, the Board of Health member. And I was surprised to see, when this agenda was posted, that there was only one member on there. And I use a parallel to past issues that the Board of Selectmen have had. All three members should have been on there because none have withdrawn their membership, their applications for the Board of Health. So, simply as to not box in any, so my colleague, Selectmen Mello, my point was that when this is made, which is approved by the Chair, it should have been caught that none of the three members withdrew. And not knowing what Selectmen Mello, if something has changed in the past month, we don't want to box this, box us in to have one candidate. All three should have still been on there. Because not having a selection committee and simply doing an interview in an open meeting of a Board of Selectmen, the only way to disqualify someone would be by vote of the Board or for them to withdraw. Seeing as though neither one of those things happened, all three names sort of, so I was just saying, had really nothing to do with you. It was a procedural thing for the Board. I just want to prevent this from happening in the future because this is the second time it's happened in a court, in the past quarter, in a short period of time. And I want us to get it right the next time, simply put.
Okay.
You know, that's all. But it really didn't have anything to do with Barbara.
I wasn't aware of it. Nobody notified me of it. And I'm fine with it.
The administrative staff, we were under the impression that someone withdrew.
So was I.
Yeah, I was I.
I missed the last meeting in, as far as I was concerned, there were two candidates. One was appointed, and now we're appointing the second one. But...
Who was recommended. So, we're just bringing forth the second recommended.
Right. That's why I...
That's generally how we operate.
Know why you wanted three, or that you expected three names.
No.
Losing something in the translation, I guess.
We interviewed three people.
Right.
Okay. Right? We interviewed three people?
But two were recommended. Me and Barbara had different, two were recommended. One of those two dropped out, and then the third one wasn't recommended. So, he just wasn't put on there because it wasn't...
Correct.
Does that make, am I...
That's the way I see it.
That's the way I see it as well.
Okay. So, two were recommended. So, why isn't the second one on there?
Because he dropped out. Or at least we were...
There were two seats. There were two seats available.
We were all under the impression that they dropped out.
There were two seats available, Mark.
So, a resignation is done in writing?
You're right. It should have been.
So, under the impression makes, it's like...
Well, they're not resigning. They just withdrew their name.
Was there a phone call made to any member of the Board of Selectmen that someone withdrew? There was?
Yes.
Who?
Me.
If you just said that, I would have just left all of this alone. That's a resignation. Sure, I guess.
No, it wasn't done in writing. I guess, like I said, something was lost in translation here.
Okay. That's, because I called all the other two candidates, and both said they didn't, they didn't drop out. I wouldn't have put you all through this. I called both candidates.
That's all right.
And I asked, did you withdraw? Both told me no.
It's better to be safe than sorry, Mark.
And you, you made a good point. And I mean, it should have been in writing, though, that we could all see it.
Right. That would have been nice in the packet, too, so we can all be on the same page. And I did, I did reach out to, I think, every member in that office, and that was not relayed to me. You know, before I come up here, I didn't waste, I wasted...
In which office?
I talked about it. The Board of Selectmen's office. Not to throw you guys under the bus, I appreciate what you did. But I try to do my due diligence and research before I walk into a meeting. It just wasn't expressed to me.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. We have to move on. We have to appoint Vincent Hebert. This is a Review Discussing Act, Board of Health Member Appointment, so that we can get a full board and move on with the Board of Health.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vincent Hebert for Board of Health Member.
I'm going to step down his chair and second that. So, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for staying through everything.
I apologize. I didn't realize that they needed me for you to be here. And I did have something in North Dayton for the Board of Health that I had to take care of.
It was just a courtesy, Barbara, and we should have told you. We just felt like, you already had items on here. Why not wait for you?
That's, that's fine. I'm just sorry that I made him wait all night long.
No, it was in us. Thank you.
Okay. We're still under old business. So, we're going to do the job description for the Town Nurse while you're here, instead of bringing you back up.
Can I make that quick, just because I think it is fine as is?
Do you?
Other than the only thing that was crossed out that I would put back on, and it was probably because I didn't maybe clarify it on there, complete foundations course within one-year hire on train. It's the site that the Health Department is supposed to train on, and they have to have that within one year. It's not what they do in nursing school.
Okay. It's different.
It's different. And it's part of the blueprint that was put out.
I misunderstood that totally.
And I understand why you would. So, if we could just add on train to that, and then they would be able to explain to them that this is a site that those employees use to complete these trainings. But everything else is valuable.
Thank you, Nicole. I didn't realize it was separate. I had looked it up, and they said it's 101 on nursing, the first semester. This is what they teach. And I'm like, why would they relearn if they were RN? But no, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
If everyone's, I'll make a motion on this. I'll make a motion that we approve the job description for the Town Nurse.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, it's understood that there'll be just that one change.
Yes, would that one change? Sorry.
And now the health agent. Before we continue with appointing, there's differences of opinion, Mark, about the hours. I was not here when the 35 hours was discussed, but I understand you wanted 35 hours as opposed to the 25 hours, and I didn't know why.
So, the Board, the Board agreed. So, it's a Board decision now.
Yeah.
And so, first of all, the appropriated money for that position is $53,505 for this fiscal year. So, I think that's a very fair...
I have that written down somewhere here. But yes, go ahead.
That's a fair starting salary for most candidates just starting out in the profession. It's negotiable. So, if we had a, you know, a candidate more qualified, we can certainly go to special and ask for more. But I think for someone starting out, it's reasonable. Two, when it was discussed at Town Meeting on the future of the Board of Health, that was part of the message that was shared with the body. And the body of Town Meeting is a higher of that of the Board of Selectmen. And that was received with a standing ovation when we said that we were going to have a full-time health agent. And upon the health agent proving themselves, we'd go back to the townspeople and make it a Department Head level position. That was a vision shared with the townspeople. And they did vote to change the structure of the Board of Health. So, this would be the first step. And also, when you try to attract the best candidate for the job, you're not going to attract the best candidate if it's part-time. We don't want to share our health agent with another town. If it's 25 hours a week, you're still paying full-time benefits. But you're going to probably have to either share them, or you know, it's going to be a stepping stone position because they can't be, it's 25 hours a week. They're going to be looking for something full-time. 35 hours a week is full-time. If it was appropriated at $53,505, that would be an hourly salary of $29.40. That's a good starting salary for someone starting out. I don't believe in two bites of the apple. We've already discussed it at the Board of Selectmen Meeting. It was voted on. That rationale was already shared at the last Board of Selectmen Meeting. You weren't in attendance, but no, no two bites of the apple. We already voted on it. Now, we've held this position up for another four weeks so that we could discuss this again. I'm sorry I didn't make the meeting, but we already discussed it.
I, it was under my impression that I heard the grapevine that the Board of Health would like the 25. Is that correct?
Actually, we've, when I was talking with James, did you give them the runoff sheets about the pricing and what we will be over? Do they have them?
I have it. I let you give me a copy yesterday.
So, we've got to 28. Just as an example, raising from 25 to 28, that's seven hours a day, which is pretty close to full-time. And if we go with 4117, which is the going price, and I mean, $41.17 an hour is cheap because most agents are making between 60, 70, and up. So, 4117, 28 hours, we will have enough money at the end of the budget. If we go to 35 hours, which is eight and a quarter hours per day, because there's only a four-day week, we'll be over budget by $12,090. And then next year, if we go with 4117 for 28 hours, we will be over budget by $6,438. If we go with the 35 hours, we will be over budget by $21,424. I'd love to have a full-time person there, but I don't know where the money's coming from. We've gone forward, backwards, everywhere around. And we've worked on it. The office manager and I have worked on it a lot, and we just can't find it. I mean, it's for 28 hours, seven, seven hours a day, and it's 40, that would be top 4117. We don't know who we're getting back, who's going to apply, and what they can do. If they can do everything that's required, which is a lot, then they get the 4117. But that's after we choose someone and the Selectmen have a written letter with them as to price compared to what they're available to do.
So, in the, in the health agent job description, there is no salary posted?
No.
So, it's negotiable. So, we are leaving it to see what applicants we can get. So, we have, we have a range.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen at our last meeting wants to give you, your department, a full-time person so we can best serve the public.
Well, this is pretty full-time. It's seven hours.
What's full-time? 25 hours a week? So, we're not going to...
28. 28 is seven hours a day. Seven, 14, 21, 28, four days. So, I mean, you, why are you arguing about one hour a day?
I don't believe you should get, we discussed this, and you weren't at the meeting, and Peter was not at the meeting.
No, I was sick. I couldn't come. I'm sorry. Sorry. Very sorry.
You know what? We, we met about this, and we discussed it, and neither one of you were here.
I just have to say, though, Barbara wasn't here, and now I feel uncomfortable that I probably shouldn't have made that motion without here, here. And that's my mistake. I take that.
You know, I think if you want something from the Board, you should be here. And I know you are sick, so I'm not giving you a hard time for being sick. You can submit correspondence to the Board. You can call the Selectmen's Office and have them write us an email saying, I'm concerned, or whatever. This, this was, we discussed it.
It's not all black and white. And to sit here and say you're taking two bites of the apple because we want to talk about, all I asked you was a simple question. Why'd you want 35 hours?
The townspeople wanted it. We had a standing ovation from the townspeople. That's what the town wants.
And many people came back to me and said they didn't fully understand and that they
maybe didn't make the best decision. So, I mean...
So, what we're going to do is we are going to appoint the Board of Health Agent this evening, appoint the job description. If the Board of Health wants 24 hours and, I don't know how you feel, Nicole, but...
That you want 28, right?
28 hours. I'm sorry. Not 24, 28 hours. Then, and it's not stressing our budget, then I think it should be 28 hours.
I agree.
But you have to be aware, last year, our budget for this year actually was stripped $22,000 because of the director's position.
Right.
And I understand, and I believe that the way it's going now is fantastic. It's working out. And you guys know how much I've been working, free for the town, free, four to five hours a day. Never mind on the weekends. Never mind, like, coming in here tonight, I had a phone call, get to North Dayton, this and that is going on. I am doing my share of helping this town to the value of $7,000.
Okay.
I'm not charging you guys anything. Now, let's come forward. Stop arguing about this. We're trying to get this board together. We're trying to get everybody working. And physically, I've told you guys, I can't keep going this way. I can't.
Okay. We're trying to solve it, and we're very close to it.
Good. Great.
Other than that, there's one thing that's crossed out. Can I mention that I'd like not cross out?
Sure.
The assist within manage, if needed, grants for the Board of Health is necessary. It is very important for the actual employees to be involved in the grants because a lot of it pertains to what they do on a daily basis. And it would have been helpful in the past to have the health agents involved. It doesn't mean they have to take over everything. And it does say is needed. So, it'd still be discretion by the Board. Wait. No, never mind. Take that back. You added it somewhere else?
Down below. I just wanted to get it together so it'd be easier.
I did see that earlier, and then I forgot. Yep.
That's all I did. I didn't, honestly, there was nothing else that's such and participates in local and regional emergencies. They just had local.
Nope.
And we're in regional. So, I just tried to find places where it would be an and if or buts. That's all. I wasn't being picky. I was just trying to make it readable.
Can you redo it? Continue the motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept this job description with the 28 hours per week.
Is there a second? I'm going to step down his chair and second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. And I'm going to aye. So, 28 hours a week with this job description that you wrote.
You say 20 or 28?
28.
28. Okay.
Thank you.
I did say at the last meeting that there are so many issues facing the Board of Health. There are so many.
Yep.
And solid waste is a huge one.
Yep.
Having a full-time agent to work on grants and look at, you know, we had a fantastic agent when I was fully employed by the Town of Dayton, and they were working on bringing in grants and getting programs to us that, you know, if you get, like, let's say, a compost pile at the transfer station, you get so many points. If you recycle propane tanks, you get so many points, and you get grants. Like, if we had someone in that office full-time, 35 hours a week, so you're saying you're working four or five hours a day. If we had that person taking off things off of your shoulder and being able to serve our...
Oh, I won't be continuing doing that, believe me. It'll be one minute.
Being able to serve our residents full-time, I think that their position would more than pay for themselves, and it's, it's needed for the Board of Health. And that was just really the direction. So, I'm outnumbered, and that's fine. And I see it's perceived as arguing, but I'm advocating for a segment of Dayton. I'm advocating for everybody. This is my view. So, I just don't want to be minimized for expressing my views. I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, nobody's trying to minimize it.
No.
I deeply respect every member of this Board, and the Board of Health is working so hard to move forward. I'm not trying to hold a process. I was actually trying to give you guys more resources to do your job and do it...
I know.
...to the best of your ability. So, I'm advocating for, I just want to finish my thoughts.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm advocating for the people of Dayton. I think we could have done it within our budget. I really do. I think we could have got somebody in. Some people have to enter government somehow. Not everyone enters government as a distinguished and with a career. They got to start off somewhere. And I think we could have found someone at 35 hours for that price. I respect the, I respect, you know, the position, and I support, you know, the will of the Board. And I totally support you guys, but don't minimize me for having a difference of opinion.
May I speak to solid waste, please?
Sure.
It's going up. It has gone up. $3,000 a month for disposal. That's now. It could go up next month, 5,000. I don't know if everybody in town knows, but the budget for the transfer station is the responsibility of the Board of Health. And we've got to come up with that money. And as far...
I believe we're having a shared meeting on the 9th of September. Solid waste in Board of Health.
We're not ready for it. We haven't got the members, the quality members that we want. And I think that's a little too soon. Let us have our first meeting.
I think it was Elizabeth who asked for it.
Pardon?
I think it was Elizabeth who asked for it.
Yeah. Well, I think that's way too soon. We, we're going to go in one area. We've got plans. I've looked into a lot of it, a lot of different methods. We can make some money and not cut anything from the town or not raise prices again. Same with the bags. We're trying. We're trying to find ways and grants. I've been looking on a lot of grants, believe me. And, you know, I say four to five hours a day, but then on weekends, I'm doing it. At night, I'm doing it. I'm constantly doing it. And trying to find ways to improve. And not at a money thing either. But we can't do anything about the cost at the other end. Like I said, $3,000 a month, just last month, it went up 3,000. They don't know where it's going to stop. Next month might be five. The month after might be six, might be seven, might be eight. And we can't keep spending this money this way. We have to watch the future. And I understand where you're coming from. I want somebody that can walk right in and pay him $41 an hour, and I don't have to be there saying, oh, do this and do that. Which James said, we don't have to worry because you're going to be there. Which James said, "We don't have to worry because you're gonna be there to help them." Right? Is that right, James? And what did I say? I cannot do it.
Okay.
I cannot do it.
You won't have to be.
Okay, thank you, James. But no, I'm not a babysitter. I have been for two and a half months, but...
We're making great headway.
We are. We are.
It leaps and bounds over where we were.
But I just want you all to know that we tried, and if we could have done that, we would have. Believe me, we would have. We want high-end, too. Are we all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Serena, did you have something to say?
I just want to clarify that the transfer station, Department 435, is actually managed under Tom Ferry.
Okay.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the budget is under Tom Ferry. Oh, wait, I thought it was Board of Health. Is it the transfer station? The transfer station is Tom Ferry. Okay, so he's got all that money?
Yes.
Then why do I keep signing those slips? I have not seen you sign for Department 435. You signed for Department 433, Waste Collection. Oh, we have. Transfer station got their own budget. Oh, I'm sorry, go off that then. So we didn't have a problem. We're... It's divided. It's crazy. But, okay.
I'll make a motion that we go back to announcements and follow on.
Sure.
Main Street... Oh, sorry.
No.
Do we have to second and all that?
No. We're just back to the agenda.
The Main Street construction project is a comprehensive initiative undertaken by the Dayton Highway Department to upgrade critical infrastructure along Main Street, a heavily traveled road in town. The project is divided into three phases, with the first phase completed in 2023 and the final phase expected to be completed by 2026. This project aims to replace the water main, improve the stormwater drainage, and add and resurface sidewalks from Williams extending to Route 138. You can find more details on the town's website under Newsflash. The Town of Dayton Food Bank will be held next September 21st, 2024, and it's located at the lower level of Town Hall.
Okay. We have public input at this point. Does anybody have anything to say?
I have some.
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to read one email into the record. It's from Leanne. "Good afternoon, Mark. Peter and Jim reviewed the August Board of Selectment meeting schedule, and when Nicole will be out on the 14th for vacation, a decision on the new Board of Health member could not be made. This led to a serious discussion about the agenda and whether or not we needed two meetings in August. Peter suggested having one meeting for the month of August, similar to what planning and zoning boards do, and we would have it on the 21st, thereby canceling the 14th and 28th meeting. Does this work for your schedule?" I called Leanne, and I said, "It doesn't. It doesn't work. I would like to move the Board of Health forward, and if Nicole can't be there, I, you know, I still want to move forward." And basically, I believe she queried the board, and it was tough. Too bad. It was a no. So this meeting is scheduled as a regular meeting of August 21st. It's not a regular meeting. It's a special meeting. A regular meeting, we voted on our meeting schedule. It was voted on by the boards, and we can't take motions outside of a meeting to... I understand core issues. If we have a core issue, you can't have a meeting. But you can't, through an email, say, "We're not gonna have a meeting on the 14th and the 28th." It's bad practice, and it's not fair to your colleagues. So my whole campaign to the townspeople of Dayton was, "I'm gonna bring a dead exclusion vote to the people of Dayton. They're asking for it. We're gonna do it." And that was scheduled for the 14th of August. And instead, because we canceled that meeting, it's crammed into this long agenda where we haven't even got to any... We're still just past the announcements. If we had two meetings in the month of August, we'd have a shorter agenda, and we'd just get through these things. So I just find that that wasn't fair. I think that vacations come unplanned overnight, and we voted on a meeting schedule. So just... I just want, if you can't make a meeting, just bring it up in the meeting so that we can discuss it. I wasn't trying... When I went back to the administrative staff, I said, "You know what? If they can just vote on the Board of Health, I'll get off their case," which was also, I'm told, it was a no. And now we just have this long agenda. So I'm just looking for, "We have a meeting on the 28th, like we voted, and if we're not, can we please alert the public to what our new meeting schedule is? Because if you go online and you look at our meeting schedule that we voted on, it's different than what's going on today." And it's... I don't like how it was handled.
I'm just gonna say that I did make my known vacation, my one vacation a year, known to the board the moment I made it. So, yeah, we don't make our vacations long in advance because we're disorganized. But other than that, I let them know right away, and I said it was fine to have a meeting without me, though I did know that we were not gonna be able to vote on the... On... You couldn't vote on the nurse thing. You couldn't vote on the other thing with me, and I know you couldn't vote on the other. But I'm sorry. I'm not gonna apologize for going on one vacation and missing one meeting since I've been selectman.
Do we note it? Okay. Public input? Yes, sir. You have your hand up first.
Kevin Smith, 1147 Center Street. Quick on the debt exclusion thing. Something for everybody to keep in mind is, at the end of the day, our taxes are going up, whether we like it or not. So I like the thought process of showing how it's gonna affect our budget. I hope that the board take... We have lived through the budget process, just trying to get to a point of a zero-based budget. This year was a struggle without absorbing that debt. So I hope that the board takes a unified front in pushing for the debt exclusion because I think it's absurd to, if your taxes are going up anyway, why would we cut valuable positions for our town when we're already hurting? So I kind of hope that that's the message moving forward. And then one thing I would like to ask of you, if you don't mind when we get out of announcements, is if you could take the donation from Olivera family out of order?
Sure.
Just because I believe they're still on Zoom, and they've been there for a little bit.
Absolutely.
So if you don't... Yeah, I just shot them a text to see if they would jump back on. I'm just...
Since it's for them and not you, Kevin.
I would appreciate it.
We can do that. Thank you. Mr. Hope?
Just one quick request. Before it goes to the voters, could the Board of Selectmen hold a public forum prior to the vote to discuss the debt exclusion, to answer questions that the public may have, to finalize the best the town can, what the numbers are going to look like? My concern is if there is uncertainty on the information that's presented and it makes a decision. I know the questions are yes or no, but if the information is inconclusive, you may not get the vote that you want or need. And with that also being said, we talked about this last year, of explaining in detail what those cuts would look like if it was a no vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else at this point? Okay.
Are they on? Are they on?
I did shoot them a text to see if they would come back.
I guess we'll just continue until they come.
Yeah, if you don't mind, we'll just keep it on.
Sure. Jim, do you want to start while we're waiting for them to pick that on?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of items, three or four items to report. To follow up on the Main Street project update, the materials bid opening is scheduled for here tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. So at least in procurement terms and in things like that, I don't know what the outcome of that is gonna be tomorrow, but certainly at your next meeting, some contract awards are likely to be requested as an action item. And I think all the obstacles to, you know, to getting a start, at least money ones and bureaucratic ones, all those things, you know, will be cleared by then. So that's advancing. Just without comment on any of the details, I just want to let the board know that, you know, you do have a contract ratification on tonight's agenda already, but the last of the unsettled contracts, the firefighter contract negotiations, I think selectmen and Melo, I would agree, they appear to be back in full swing now. So, you know, there was a... You know, we stalled a little bit during the transition period, but the last of the contracts, I assure you, you know, are back in full swing. We have sent long-form contracts to two outfits. One is Hill-Leroy Corporation for the fire station feasibility study. So we expect assigned a contract back from them and a start on the project. And we've also sent a long-form contract out to Weston and Sampson. This is an Alpa-funded project for MS, Stormwater MS4 Compliance Services. So that's out of the gate. And finally, at the last meeting, I shared with you the announcement that the town got a cybersecurity grant. We're in possession of the onboarding documents, and we're processing those now. So if it necessitates action at the next meeting, so be it. If it's something that we can handle in-house, I will do that, but we will advise you under the Town Administrator's Report at the next meeting. I'm not sure which way that one's gonna go, but we're onboarding that grant, and that's it.
Any more discussion about bonding the Main Street project?
Well, we did get from Lynn Foster, Lynn Foster's partner, Margaret McLean, a debt schedule. I did share it with you some time ago, but that... And we had a number of scenarios, five, 10, 15, 20 years. $3 million was the estimated portion of the Main Street sidewalk reconstruction and road resurfacing. That is... You know, that's out there on the horizon a bit. The stormwater stuff, you know, Tom Ferry has, you know, he's said weather is, you know, for the second phase of the project, weather could well be a factor, you know, in the amount of time that it takes. And any other special circumstances, if a culvert washes out up in the northwest quadrant of town, you know, we're gonna have to devote our resources up there. So things are gonna be... He expects it to go to construction seasons, actually. I think it would be a miracle. So anyway, you know, that said, we may be looking a little too far ahead if we're talking about financing, you know, the sidewalk and road surfacing thing. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's a ways off. But we did get a peek at what the numbers would be.
Thank you. Selectmen's reports?
I think we have our...
Our rules here?
Yeah.
Okay. This is gonna go under acknowledgements. It's a letter to Kevin Smith of the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding a donation of $20,000 from Dave and Kate Olivera. Are you guys there?
Yep.
They're muted.
You're here. Thank you. Hi. No, thank you very much. That's unbelievable. I think that's a lot, just donations from a residence that we've had since I've been around for 30 some odd years. But it's fabulous for what you do. And the Parks and Recreation does a great job for us, and this is going to go a long way, helping with that.
No, did you want to speak, Kevin?
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
So good evening again, everyone, and good evening, Dave and Kate. Thanks for joining us. If you don't mind, I'd like to read their letter, so it's read into the record. Dear Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen, we are pleased to contribute a $20,000 donation to the Parks and Recreation Department of the Town of Dayton, Massachusetts, in memory of David's late father, Michael Olivera. Originally from Somerset, Mike was a Dayton resident for over 30 years. He was committed to community service through organizations such as Dayton Schools PTO, Boy Scout Troop 45, Dayton Baseball League, and numerous fundraising activities for those in need. Mike suffered from a physical disability since childhood, which limited his ability to walk long distances or stand for extended periods of time. Although these limitations did not define his life, they were an important part of his story. We would love to see some of the funds used to improve accessibility for others with physical limitations. Additionally, Mike was the life of the party and loved being surrounded by many friends and family. Creating or improving spaces for the gathering areas of the community playground would also be a great honor to his legacy. We look forward to your partnership in allocating these funds where you feel they will have the greatest impact. Sincerely, Dave and Kate Olivera. Just to piggyback quickly off of what Chairman Karen already said is, we do, from time to time, receive donations, and this is, I think, by far the largest donation that I know Parks and Rec has ever received. And while we appreciate the smallest ones, this one is gonna have such a major impact in what we're able to do for this community. Being a small town, you know, our financial limitations are pretty tight, so we'll be able to make a huge, huge difference with this contribution. So we can't thank you enough for that and for thinking of us when trying to memorialize your father. We thank him also for his time that he dedicated to our community. And one thing that I did, just I want to share with the board, is I did pledge to Dave and Kate that as we plan something for the use of these funds, is I'm gonna actively engage Dave and Kate and make sure that we do something that's done in Michael's likeness, so that way... I want them to be part of the process, not just take it and run with it. So we're working on some things, and we're gonna put together a couple of different ideas and then engage them and move forward. So I just, again, thank you guys so, so much because this is gonna be a massive impact. And Parks and... Just so you know, too, Parks and Rec, we've been moving towards, you know, accessibility and inclusion has been on the forefront of kind of our mission. So seeing the way that you worded this and how you like, would like to see the funds allocated is huge for us, and it means a lot for us. Just thank you again.
That's a great letter. Thank you. It's very unselfish of you to do that, to think of the town. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for thinking of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know if you can because it's under acknowledgements, but I do think we need to make a motion to accept the donation.
You do? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of $20,000 from Dave and Kate Olivera.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kevin, for...
Thank you. Thanks for taking me.
Okay. Selectmen's reports? Hey, Nicole?
All I wanted to mention was, I just wanted to mention the folks that I saw and the ones that maybe I didn't see at the Pan Mass Challenge that were helping out the moment I got there. Tom Ferry was there with his favorite signs he likes to tote around town. Ed Dutra was there volunteering his time to keep everyone safe. The chief of police was out there directing traffic with the biggest smile on his face. I also want to thank the chief, the fire chief from Middleborough, Chief Thompson. He had his water truck at the event, and he also supplied the water as well because he was aware of the struggles that we have with Dayton, that we might not be that thrilled that they're spraying the riders with our water. So, that was excellent because there was a lot of folks that had to go out, endure the heat. So, thank you to everyone. And anyone that I didn't see, thank you for volunteering at that event.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay.
None today. Thank you.
What else? Okay. We'll move to old business, please. Conservation Commission, update on end-of-year transfer resolution. Are you doing it?
No, there's a letter in the... There's a letter in your meeting packet, Mr. Chairman.
Should we accept it? Do we have to accept that check? Or can we just...
No. But the matter has been resolved with repayment to the town.
We did the town nurse and the health agent. So, now on to new business for review, discuss, and act the warrant for the 2024 state primary.
I'd like to make a motion to sign the warrant for the 2024 state primary and to assign two police details for the state primary.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special town meeting proposed schedule. This is again a review, discuss, and act. We have it here in front of us. Any questions?
Was the town moderator and town clerk made aware of the schedule already?
Not the schedule, but they made aware of the date.
Sorry, the date of the town meeting, and that works for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Town clerk participated in the meeting resetting the dates.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept the town meeting schedule as, special town meeting schedule as presented.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, review, discuss, and act the ratification of the 9/11 Dispatches Memorandum of Understanding, which we have in front of us, too, which we talked about. So, we're just ratifying the contract.
So, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the 9-1-1 Dispatches Memorandum of Understanding.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, may I? Maybe I blanked out for a moment. Did you open the special town meeting warrant?
No.
Okay.
We did not.
Sorry. It opens today. Motion to open the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just one comment on that.
Sure.
We just had a long presentation on the debt exclusion that's going on the November ballot. So, I just asked departments when you're submitting things to the Board of Selectmen, it's not a wish list. Wish lists, things can go on. The annual special is for things that were unplanned. It should not be things that we want.
Excellent.
Thank you for the vote, Mr. Chairman.
9/11 dispatches?
You did that.
We did that one. Representative to the school committee for purpose of collective bargaining. Appointment by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, is the 1993 Education Reform Act, among many other things, provided for municipal representation during school collective bargaining negotiations. And so, I think there's a letter in here requesting someone from the town. And it's my belief that a member of the board may have an interest in that. I'm not sure exactly.
They want us to attend the August 27th meeting, I believe, which is like, I think they sent this email on August 20th. So, that gives us like seven days' notice. In this bargaining representative, it says no less than 21 days before collective bargaining negotiations. The school district is supposed to notify either the chairman of the Board of Selectmen or the town administrators. So, they didn't really give us that much notice on it.
No.
Doesn't really fit in my schedule.
Okay.
You're not compelled to participate.
To represent?
No.
We don't have to participate?
No, you're not compelled to do that.
I think we should advertise this for maybe to someone in Town Hall or to someone that does business with us a lot that may want to serve on it. Do you think we could just post it for like a week?
Yeah, absolutely.
At the next meeting, we can discuss it?
Okay. Let's do that. Can you take care of that for us, Karen?
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to appoint James Aguirre to the Stormwater Committee. I thought he was on that.
I know. I'm confused.
It was an over... He is. I think it lapsed and...
I'll make a motion to appoint James Aguirre to the Stormwater Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to appoint Abel Mariano as voting member of the Conservation Commission. We interviewed this gentleman once before, correct? He was here?
I think he was a... Yeah, he was a non-voting, and what's now he becoming voting?
So, now he's going to be a voting member?
Mm-hmm.
I don't feel the need that he have to be here like we request. I don't know how you guys feel about that. We've already talked to him.
I agree with you.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
I'd make that motion to appoint Abel Mariano as a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Acknowledgements. We've already done the letter to Kevin Smith from the Oliveras, a letter from the chief McGee, a new member for the call personnel ranks, Andrew Spellman. The chief sent that letter. You should have in your packet.
It is there.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome, Andrew Spellman.
Definitely. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept the letter and place on file.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A letter from Leonard Hill resigning from the Conservation Commission.
Motion to accept with thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we get into the warrants. You have those?
Yes. I make a motion to pay the warrants paid August 1st, 2024, 5A-25 in the amount of $122,726.2, 5B-25 in the amount of $510,903.91. Motion to pay the warrants of August 8th, 2024, 6A-25 in the amount of $113,707.55, 6B-25 in the amount of $331,222.3, 6C-25 in the amount of $8,595.55, 6D-25 in the amount of $1,668,897.38. Warrants paid by August 15th, 2024, 7A-25 in the amount of $114,545.2, 7B-25 in the amount of $814,213.4. Warrants paid by August 22nd, 2024, 8A-25 in the amount of $116,355.48, 8B-25 in the amount of $156,800.63.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Interrupt the public input again.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
I just want to just back up to my, what I said earlier. I wasn't attacking you for taking a vacation. I take one vacation. I had one vacation the past two years, and I totally believe you said at the last meeting. But we still would have had a quorum. I just felt out of the loop. I was kind of just caught by surprise. And I'm just advocating, I'd rather have shorter meetings than longer. And I just, I'm still unclear on whether or not we're going to have a meeting on the 28th. And I just want the board to know I might have come off strong at this meeting. I'm just advocating for myself.
Sure.
And I think you guys are doing a good job.
Okay.
As is the front office staff, Mr. Pacigo.
Absolutely. Let's discuss the 28th. What does the agenda look like right now?
I'm not sure.
There wasn't much on it the other day when I was here. Was it Tuesday?
We had, in an attempt to resolve Board of Health issues, specifically job descriptions and the need to get the health agents one out of the gate, a suggestion was made by a board member that why don't we just get together in a joint meeting with the Board of Health? And so, we floated that, you know, a joint meeting of the Selectmen and the Board of Health to, you know, to get that over with. And so, we began shopping around a, you know, a 28th meeting date. You managed that, Mr. Chairman, by directing staff to make sure that the health agent job description was a matter discussed here tonight so it would not necessitate a joint meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
So, that's what the talk about the 28th was, is a possible meeting date. We had... But I don't believe I discussed this with any of you, but we were considering the status of the Town Administrator search stuff as another possible discussion item on the 28th, given, you know, they're right there at the end line of some of the vetting of the candidates. But they are nevertheless within one week's time of their contracted schedule, which is, you know, really pretty good.
Right.
So, there were some, you know, there were some discussions. Staffs had spin over trying to coordinate, you know, some of these things. And, you know, they don't always bear fruit. You know, we raise possibilities and things. If you think it's confusing for you, it's pretty confusing for my front office help, too.
Okay. Where are we with the compensation for the front office staff?
That's scheduled for your next meeting at the request of the front office staff.
So, then why don't we have a meeting?
We requested it be put to the 11th.
Oh, you requested the 11th? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we just, all of us, my point is we have it on our meeting schedule. We voted on... I just think we should vote not to have it if we're not going to have it.
I agree.
That's my point.
So, if there's nothing on the agenda, then I don't see a reason to have one.
Okay.
So, is there a motion on the floor, please?
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.[1757.54]